If everyone can have their seats, we're going to get started, please.
I probably heard him. Did I hear two?
Thank you.
But I only heard it once, and you can hear it like this.
Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. This is a special meeting on the city budget. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here in our city council audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable, channel 22. A notice was received by Councilmember Ruckregal of the city council. In accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16,142, Councilmember Ruckregal would be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to Councilmember Ruckregal's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by Councilmember Ruckregal to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council, and the presiding officer shall declare Councilmember Ruckregal present. Hearing no objection. The council mics are open. Please call the roll. Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Ruckregal.
Present.
And Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the agenda, I want to wish a happy birthday to Councilwoman Beth Jensen, and I'd like to extend congratulations to Councilmember Euler for being named to the 40 leaders under 40. Congratulations. Madam Clerk? Oh, there we go. Sorry about that.
Okay. 22-373 is a communication from the mayor and corporation counsel with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to go over the apologia for the emergency declaration. There are three items. One is to implement COVID protocols for city facilities. Number two is to evaluate and create temporary procedures for public board and commission meetings to be conducted remotely in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, as in-person meetings are not practical or prudent. And number three, evaluate and implement staffing adjustments, work schedules, and alternate working arrangements where necessary. Madam Mayor, I don't believe that any of these items are presently necessary to undertake, nor do I think that they will be in the foreseeable future. I think we've reached the time where we can eliminate the state of emergency. I'll be voting no. It's not personal on this. I just, I just think we've, we've run through all these items, and none of them are relevant any longer. So, so I'll be voting no. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I don't take it personal. Our state of declaration is in line with the governor's state of emergency declaration, which has continued to be in place, and we continue to have virtual meetings for many of our commissions. Or is that all of, is that pretty much all of our commissions, Manager?
Not, not all of them, but a significant number are still meeting online and, and using the tools that we've all come to use during the pandemic. So, and we do still have the opportunity to work with our staff on alternative work schedules outside of the office, depending on, on whether or not they're sick, or if something has come up, which is really directly related to the, the COVID protocols that we established. So, we're still doing two and three, for sure.
Very good. Thank you. I got a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
Motion passes with one nay. Kelly. Madam Clerk?
22-348 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to hold a dis, excuse me, a discussion on the 2023 revised budget.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a second series of report backs. There's six report backs in your packet that we wanted to follow up on. The first is, at the request of Councilman Graham and Councilman Kelly, we wanted to look at doing a parking system study. I'm going to turn it over to Public Works Director Powers to walk through the, the scope of work and cost that this study would, would entail.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, there was a rather detailed discussion at the last council meeting, or the last really budget discussion around parking. I've sent actually, since actually had a one-on-one conversation with Councilor Kelly in regard to some of what opportunities may exist in and around the parking. And I would say this, when you look at this agreement as to this study, as you look at it, and I'll go topically, and I won't cover every bullet item. I'll leave you to do that. But as you look at this study, what we were able to do by exercising our master services agreement was found an engineering firm that has a relationship, business relationship, if you will, with someone that would have the capability to do a financial analysis, which is really what we're asking for. What is our budget financial impact, economic impact, quite frankly, of parking in Peoria, ballistically? So with that said, I would propose we engage upon this study in these categories. The financial analysis, you see the cost reach next to it. The public involvement portion, which again is going to be key to this, which would involve the downtown businesses, residents that would use parking, so on. The technology that we may go forward with, which I think would be key if we were to consider any quote, nothing is free, not even charity. Hence, there will likely be an enforcement component, some technology around what that might look like. And then the task related to data collection in that regard, and then the report back itself to the council that they would provide for us with a total cost of $65,000. The start to finish product would be about a six-month iteration with a report back to council. Again, I would anticipate if you approved it, we would engage beginning of '23, unless we started this year, and I did not talk to the manager about that. So, I, forgive me about that part. I did not get a firm on that. But we could start at any moment with that study. So that's report back number one. And unless there are any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Ruckregal. Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
This is more just an exclamation mark perhaps than a question mark, but under the tasks, the second task, inventory existing business uses and create a parking needs analysis. And I think it's about the eighth one down, identify parking needs based on current business occupant demand. To me, those are the two things that are critical drivers here, because working downtown and parking in one of the decks, I, I say this every time we have the discussion, if you make free parking, it's going to be real tempting for those people who are currently working at law firms or whatever to just pull into a spot on the street. So, so if we can find a way to provide free parking without that consequence, I, I will be very excited to embrace this. So.
Absolutely, Counselor. A term known in the industry as parking survey for employees is very common in those type of areas. Hence, what I said relative to alternative enforcement measures. I'm not going to guess what the consultant will come back with as a recommendation, because that's why we're going to hire them. Likely what you will see, though, is some technology, disc implants, something. Again, now I am completely brainstorming, but there are technologies that provide alternative means of enforcement that would prevent that survey from taking place. And this report will include those technologies. So.
I'm really looking forward to seeing the results of a study like this, because we all have our antidotes that we, we spew all, every time we have this. So, I'm sure you're tired of hearing me say the same thing over and over as well. So, let's, let's have the experts study it and get back to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm wondering, could we also include in the, the under tasks where you talk about providing recommendations on the parking system, balancing on-street parking? I think to have some kind of comparison with cities that are similar to our size, that have thriving downtowns. Specifically, I think about Champaign, and in that older part of Champaign where there's now a new hotel and lots of great restaurants. We're, I've, we've spent a lot of time as a family when our kids are there for soccer tournaments and things. And from my recollection, there's no, the on-street parking is not required to be paid for. And it's very vibrant, and there's a lot of people down there. So if we could include that in the study, I think that's important to compare us to comparable cities. You know, we've gotten this other report that we need to have a downtown that's thriving, and it's, it's not right now, partly because of other circumstances with COVID and all of that. But I'd like to see that included in the study.
Agreed, Counselor, and it will be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I just wanted to make sure I understand the process there. So we get a report back for $65,000. Does that mean it will make automatically be in the budget as an item or not?
So, one, one of the things that we're going to need to talk about this evening is a series of budget motions that we need to come back to you next week to amend. If, if council is amenable, we'll, what we'll do is, for example, in this item, we would write this up as a budget motion to amend the recommended budget, to add the $65,000 expense, and then that would be included in the budget as an expense item. So then that would, when you ultimately then vote to finalize the budget, that would be your voting on the budget as amended. So, we would come back to you with a series of budget motions next week to, to act on.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, we had, not just a couple, the last couple of years, really, we made a lot of cuts, and we had to make a lot of cuts in the budget. And I started a conversation about the possibility of selling some of our assets, which was these, these, the parking decks. Obviously, it was taken care of. Now we have a surplus of money. Things are much better today. But now that I've had many discussion, because I had, I asked, I was part of, I believe, with my colleague, Mr. Graham, asked for a report back. I'm not sure I want, really, now I've been happy with the conversation I had with the staff, and I want to say that I'm not sure I would be okay with spending $65,000 now on, on these, these, these reports. So, I, I've been pleased, and I'm satisfied with the conversation I had. They answered all my questions. And now I do, I do not want to sell the decks anymore, but I'm not sure I want to waste $65,000 also. To me, the parking now is like really the garbage, where it's at, à la carte. And I think the garbage should pay for itself, and I think the parking deck should pay for itself also. It's, we need to raise it to, I believe it was by $10. I'm, I'm leaning more towards that direction now than spending $65,000 on some type of report. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question to you, Director Powers. So, we are going to spend $65,000 on this task. So before that, do you have an idea of how much money we make every year on parking? I mean, free parking is good, I would say, but if you, if you can tell me the number of how much we make every year on parking alone?
I'll defer to the finance manager.
In totality, with on-street parking, as well as, as well as the garage fees, we're at about 1.5 million in parking fees.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of comments. First of all, it was stated that perhaps the decks can pay for themselves. The decks at current prices, which have just been raised, raised a little bit, pay for about half of themselves. They pay for the maintenance of the decks. They don't pay for the cost of the decks. If the cost of the decks was included in the monthly fee, the monthly fee would be about double what it is today. So the parking decks are quite, just taken by themselves. They're very uneconomic. However, they're a, a very valuable asset to the downtown. This is why I am considering, myself anyway, that we shouldn't be, or we should consider not charging at all for the decks. Would cost us $1.5 million a year. We could do it for a period of time, but I would think that that would enhance the value of our downtown to downtown users. That would, I think, bring more, that would relieve some of the vacancies that we have in our office buildings. It would bump up somewhat some of our sales tax generators in downtown. I think it would raise the assessed values of the office buildings downtown. We, you know, we're all familiar with the curve that we've seen about our general fund, which is going to be fabulous this year. But it's going to be overwhelmed within the very foreseeable future by our pension obligations. And it seems to me that just continuing to go the way we're going in our city, we're going to be in deep trouble. We need to do things to spur growth in our, in our city. I think that's the only way out. It would be nice if Springfield was nice to us, but I don't have any particular illusions about that. So, we have to address this, not when it comes up, but perhaps in advance of it. And policies that really encourage growth in our city, I, I think should be viewed very, very seriously by us. I, I have some other ideas, but they're not on, on this item. But this, this seems crazy. We're going to give away parking in an asset that already costs us money, and it's going to then cost us more. Can we make up that $1.5 million through increased values in our downtown and increased commerce in our downtown? That is something I think that this study is also going to be looking at. So, so my soliloquy is finished, Madam Mayor.
Would you like me to respond to that just briefly, or just, was that, okay? I was just saying, to the, to your point, Counselor, that's why the study is being conducted in an economic sphere, more so than in engineering sphere. And I can give you fixed costs. I can give you O and M. I can tell you what we're going to lose. I can tell you what we would potentially generate. I don't want to say this in a way that sounds hard or speculative, but it's speculative. Parking may do that. It may. I believe this is what we will benefit from, to Counselor Jensen's point. Will it or won't it? Have we seen it? The chicken or the egg? Was the vibrant downtown existed before free parking existed, or will free parking draw people to a vibrant downtown? Those are the, those are the tools we do not have in our box today to look for that crystal ball to determine if it is that type of generator. You could well be right, and this report may tell us that. But that's one of the key reasons of doing the study, is to make that determination.
And to add one other point with that is that, you know, if you look back at the first report back that we did in the, two weeks ago, that report back included the fact that, that we only control 32% of the parking in downtown and in the riverfront. There are, there's many of the, two-thirds of the spaces, more than that, are controlled by the private sector. And, you know, the, my concern is if we, if we simply flip the switch and say all of our parking is free, we're going to see people that are going to be leaving private decks and moving to city decks for free, and we're going to be driving their cost down, their revenues down, and the private sector down as well. So, that's a concern that I have with, with simply flipping the switch to say we're just going to go to free parking in the decks. I, I think, as we've alluded to, I think with the study, I think we can look at, at what is it, what makes sense on the streets. That's a different animal, and I think that that's something that, that we can look at. But my concern on the decks is that it drives, that, that if we simply turn our, our revenues off, we're going to see that the private sector is going to be impacted adversely by that.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm not necessarily opposed to doing the study, but I feel like we need to have a more comprehensive discussion amongst ourselves before we decide that we're going to pay the money to do the study on how exactly those things are going to work. Because I have some concerns as well in relation to the maintenance on the decks, and are we really going to prioritize that when we stop generating revenue off of them? And so I think we need to look at what those costs are, and, because what I'm fearful will happen here with our other capital assets in our community is that if we're not generating revenue that's going to those things directly, they will be the lowest priority thing on the list to fix, and then we will be discussing having to tear parking decks down because we didn't do the maintenance on them all along. And I want to make sure before we spend $60,000 that we actually have a functional plan for how we would handle that. Because it doesn't make sense to me to spend the money to do the study if at the end of the day, we're going to decide not to do anything because of the other factors that we already know. So.
Well, I, I would say that, that the study should be rightly focused on the on-street side more than the decks because of that. I mean, I think that that, that's where I think that we have the most opportunity to make some change. It's not the full, I mean, what we're, you know, we, I think we collect roughly, at our peak, it was about $300,000 a year of on-street parking revenues. So, you know, it's, that's kind of the equation that I'm looking at for that. I think that, that, you know, if, if, I mean, we can certainly look at the decks from an economic standpoint, but I think that, that's my, my concern about adversely affecting the private sector. There's, there's six large privately-held parking decks in downtown, and, or by other, by other, one by another governmental, so five privately-held and one by another, by the county. So, I, I just think that, that, you know, if we, if we turn off our rates in those parking decks, we're going to hurt those other, other parking lots. Now, the street, I think we can, we can attack in a different way, and I think the study would certainly help us to address that. That, that's the only thing I would add to that.
And would we have a way to manage the street without having to be concerned that the people are going to move from the decks to the street so that they don't have to pay?
That's why we're, we want to do the study, is we want to look at what, what technologies are out there, what other communities have done. How have they, how have they tackled that same issue? That's what I think that we would want to do with the study.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, what I would recommend, and I assume this is part of it, is that we approve the study, but we also have some input into the scope as part of the process. I mean, wouldn't that be part of the process, that the, the council could have input into that, the scope?
Generally, you know, what we've done is we've had staff right up the scope. I mean, we could certainly share it with council to show you what the scope would look like in concert with the, the consultants.
Have some input.
Yeah.
Correct. And, and, well, that's actually what you're reading before you is a proposal provided to us. So what you see today, I've already been taking notes for additions to what is already in this has been proposed as this calls. So, yes, I would say just almost as a report back I've been adding, as I've been hearing in particular interest.
Ma'am Mayor?
Yes.
This is Councilman Ruckregal. Whenever, whenever everybody else has done, like, make some comments on this.
Okay. I have Councilmember Graham ahead of you, and then I'll circle right back to you.
No problem.
Councilmember Graham?
John Kelly is a revolutionary compared to me. When I talked about trying free parking downtown even 15 years ago, I never envisioned the decks. But I always envisioned the possibility that we would be able to do what we did in the 1950s and 60s, and encourage people to come downtown and park on the streets for free, for whatever timeframe we would designate. We used to have patrolmen actually mark tires with chalk, and they'd go around, and if they marked them more than once, they knew how long that vehicle was there. We now no longer probably have to use chalk, although we could if we wanted to. But there are technological devices that would recognize that vehicle based on the plate or whatever. And we could say, you know, you can park downtown for free for 90 minutes, two hours, whatever. It's all part of the ongoing effort to create more vitality downtown. There are so many different things happening right now. Mayor, you, the manager and I met with some, some party today that's interested in knowing what our downtown is going to look like. And I know Counselor Kelly really wants to see a more revitalized downtown. I don't have as much faith as he does in it taking off right away to the point where we could offer free parking in our decks, but I wouldn't rule that out as time passes. I would be more glacial, not as radical, and I'd try the on-street free parking first. I would be more glacial, not as radical, and I'd try the on-street free parking first. I think this study may very well address how other cities have approached it and give us some frame of reference. But it's been very interesting for me to listen to my colleagues talk about this, because we all wanna see a more vibrant downtown and impediment taken away from people coming downtown to enjoy restaurants and whatnot even during the day. As a small child, I remember the downtown was bustling, you do too.
Yes.
And, you know, sometimes my family would have to park in the Block &amp; Cool building parking deck, which is where the OSF Ministry Headquarters now is, but we also had on-street parking, but that was our retail center. So along comes a place called Sheridan Village. It's our first suburban shopping center, and in their jingle they say parking is free. Come see Santa Claus, you know, come, come right away because we have free parking. That was the appeal. And this helped siphon away some of the vitality that was in our downtown in terms of retail. Oh, we don't have to fight, because this was the place to go, we don't have to fight getting a place to park, we can now maybe go to Sheridan Village. Of course, there were other commercial venues there. But I always envisioned it on, at first anyway, a smaller scale. And then if the traffic, I hate to use the word traffic, if the traffic would, would bear it, then we would take a look at doing something. With our decks, we could even take a look at during big events, discounted parking rates, things of that sort. There's flexibility in how we can manage this to get people downtown into the decks without breaking the bank. Those are just some of my thoughts.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of, couple of observations, I guess, as I'm looking at this item here. One is, the street parking, for myself, I think that there is some real validity into looking about how do we get street parking for free and, and offer that as an amenity for downtown. To be honest, most of the time it is free, it's just through our, our Monday through Fridays and during the daytime hours that it seems that, that it isn't free. It's free at night, it's free on the weekends, it's free on holidays. And so I think there is a thought process about how we can actually offer that free during those business times that, that might behoove some extra activity downtown, and I'm all for that. With that being said, I, I look at the parking garages and what we have invested in them. In talking with other cities over the past couple of years about what they've done with their parking, one of the things that is duly noted, which I think that we have not done just because of our sort of budget in the past, is we have not invested the dollars to bring our parking garages to the city operate probably up to the standards of most parking garages. That can be with new additional equipment to get in and out, additional equipment to be able to tell you where other additional parking may be. The city manager and I've had conversations on this for quite a while. Everything from cleanliness to new lighting to brighter telecommunications, because people wanna park where they feel safe, and that sometimes takes an investment. What I see on the study is probably getting the answers that our Public Works can be able to tell us on the street parking. And, and I'm all for being able to, as Councilmember Grab says, maybe taking a, a test of this and, and kind of doing this ourselves and being able to, I think that we're not, we're not charting a new course here. In some ways, we're going back to what it used to be. In some ways, we're looking at what other cities can do. But I think our Public Works Department can probably supply us with that information. If we were gonna go into a study on the decks, I would like to see what the investment side of that is also going to be, because even if it's free or if it is, if it's paid parking, there would also come to the, where, what those amenities for those parking garages need to be to be able to fill today's needs in the public's mind. Because that is also part of, not all parking is created equal. So, for me, I, I think that we can also look at our Public Works Department, we've got some, some good knowledge there. Our, our department head there has actually worked under cities where they've done some great things on parking, and maybe able to take this money and be able to put that into personnel that can actually help us bring free parking to the streets downtown. That might be a better use of the sixty-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Kelly, I appreciate the ingenuity for bringing this suggestion forward. I think we definitely need to think outside the box when we're talking about trying to create vibrancy back downtown. I would be in favor of the cert, of the, of the, I'm sorry, of the assessment, the parking assessment that you are looking to do for the sixty-five thousand dollars, because I think that's a worthy investment versus waiving the one-point-five million dollars that we're currently generating if we decide to go to free parking in the parking deck. I am a little nervous about us waiving that revenue generator. I know things are a little bit better right now, and I'm just a little nervous that once that toothpaste is outside of the tube, we can't go back in, that we might be regretting that we don't have that asset to generate revenues in the future. And so it's one of those things, if you build it, will they come? We have to take that gamble, but right now, I'm a little cautious on that. So I definitely would be in, in support of an assessment to make sure that we make the right data-driven decision. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm gonna go off-script briefly for a minute and ask about reverse-end parking, because I get more complaints still about that than I do paid parking, and I'm part of an organization that just voted to stop holding meetings in the struggling Twin Towers because the people going to the meeting are tired of dealing with reverse-end parking.
We, we can certainly revisit the, the reverse parking, the backend parking that we, we currently have, that's something we can, we can take back in Public Works, and, and I can have that conversation about where we wanna do with that. We've tried it, and, and, you know, it, it has elicited some strong opinions on both sides, I'll say that.
Yeah, I, I think if there was consistency, maybe it would float better, but just not having ever taken off and being different than everywhere else, it causes more confusion than anything. And I was not supporting moving this meeting that I attend out of Twin Towers, but that was the number-one reason it was chosen to do it, according to the survey that the board members took was because of that. And so I think that that could be very beneficial to this discussion. Thank you.
All I can say about that is ditto. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of comments. The private decks in downtown Peoria have to be part of this study. They're part of our downtown, they're part of our community, they're not to be left out. They're, it's a challenge. They're losing lots of money as well, and they have lots of vacancies in their buildings as well. So, my thought was not just to deal with city decks, it's deck parking downtown is, is what I had in mind. Secondly, to Councilmember Allen's point, if we go all the way on this, and after some time, it proves to be an economic burden, it, it does not pan out, it doesn't generate further assessed value downtown, it doesn't generate further sales tax downtown to the extent that it looks like this was a good idea, we're not stuck. We can go back and reinstitute fees for, for parking. So, just, just to make that clear, it's not a, once we do it, we, you know, we're, we're done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. This has been a good discussion. I, I really like the idea of a, a study because we wanna make fully-informed, data-driven decisions. I also support the concept that Councilmember Ruckregel shared about smart parking. And, you know, cities are using technology more with regard to parking, and this study would look at the technology aspect of smart parking in downtown. I like the idea about going slow in terms of looking at free on-street parking before taking on, you know, the decks. I, I think that it is more complicated with private decks and not wanting to be in competition with the, the private decks. But a lot of very good considerations for us to, to consider next week. I think we're, I think we're done with this item, Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the second report back pertained to the presentation from Unity Point Health. They did make an announcement today on their merger with, or their acquisition by the Carl Health System. I'll make, I got, received it earlier this afternoon, I'll make sure that council gets a copy of that later today. There's three options that, that staff looked at to, if the council was so inclined to support a contribution to Unity Place. The first, we have a one-point-nine million dollar surplus in the general fund, so if council was inclined to do that, we could take, take, you know, up to a million dollars out of the, the general fund for that purpose. The second, we did put in the capital budget eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for Depot Street in the general capital budget. Most of the funds for the rest of that project is coming out of the Warehouse District. We could shift that eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to the Warehouse District, and then you could use those funds and pay for it out of the, the capital fund, which is, I mean, this really is a capital contribution that would be made for Unity Place. The third option is, we have a million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds that are set aside for demolitions. We could shift that back to coming out of the capital budget, and then, and then using general fund dollars to pay for that demolition work, and then use the American Rescue Plan funds for the capital contribution for Unity Place. This is, I think Councilman Seer asked, is this a, a legitimate expense of the American Rescue Plan funds? And the short answer is yes, this is, this is allowable under that. So, those were three options that we came up with. The third is really, you know, somewhat like the, the, the first option, but it, it does allow you to say that you're using those American Rescue Plan dollars to fund that directly.
This would be a capital project that we would be funding, not operations?
No, we, we viewed this as a capital contribution, so this would be money that we would be giving them for their capital, the work that they have to do on the facility.
Okay. Questions? Thoughts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That, the presentation given by Dr. Nepp was, was very good. But again, I never thought that the presentation came with an ask, seriously, because it came with a one-million-dollar ask, not knowing what, what the presentation is all about. Let's say we, there is another entity that comes out and say we wanted to build something, and now with CAL and Unity Point, we don't know how the direction changes. I wanted to be very cautious when we dole out these funds, and maybe if, let's say, a second entity comes over and say we wanted to do the same thing, so are we willing to provide the same support to any other organization that comes upfront and say we will also help in the, in the, in the field of mental health? So then, we, it's not like we emptied all our pockets into one thing, rather wait and see how this association of CAL with Unity Point takes place. Maybe that's, that's my, my thought on, on that. We may have, we could, we could actually reserve our thoughts, we don't need to do it right away, and wait and see how this thing spans out. That's, that's the way I see it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
In terms of the, you're speaking in terms of the transition from Unity Point to CAL?
That is correct, and at the same time, we don't know, you know, when, when there is a change of leadership, it may not be the priority of the incoming leadership, that's natural. But again, I am, I know they are committed for doing what they're doing in the, in the community, but I would wait, basically. I mean, I, you know, it's more like, I, so after, before I listened to the conversation, it was more like the service to the community, but after that, it, it, it looked like an elevator pitch, where, you know, we come to an investor and say this is what we did, this is what we want. Yes, we are, we are invested in the idea, but now we have to look into the books to really see where this money is going, how we are gonna do it, and, and the ask is pretty big. So I, I just wanted to really wait to see how these options open for us, and let's say, now OSF wants to come forward and say we also want to open a mental health facility. Then they, then we also have to be ready to be doling out one more million if they ask. So I, my, my thought is to just, you know, let us see one more time how, I mean, let's regroup ourselves one more time to really think whether this is a good idea, whether we wanted to invest a million dollars into it, and what it is going to give back to the community. I mean, that's my opinion on this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I think some of those questions can probably be answered now, according to Dr. Nepp, it's, the board is not changing, it's kind of a seamless transition, but it's the same Board of Directors and kind of with the same vision. Member Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted, these comments I'm gonna make are just reports, basically, from the people I've talked to on the phone or in person, and some of the people from the Fifth District, basically, the one I've talked to. Number, first question that I did not know, I think I know the answer, but the first question is this, the money they want from us, is this emergency money? Do they need that money, that million-dollar for operation right away? That's question number one I've received. Other comment was, you know, we like to pick our own charities, who we wanna give money to. They don't believe that the, we should use taxpayers' money to make donation to non-profit. That should be the job of our constituent. So I just wanna put that on the table, these are the comments I have received. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate you all bringing these different options, definitely need to dive into these before I can make a definitive decision. Just to get some context, is this something that the council has done in the past? Have we made donations to nonprofits in the past? It, you know, is this, is this a, something that, is this a per usual, or is this kind of an outlier?
Well, I think that the number's probably an outlier. We did, with the conclusion of the South Town TIF, there were a number of nonprofits in the community that, that received some funds that were in South Town, that received some funding. Carver Center is one that comes to mind that we funded. You know, we take, I think it's the, the public services allocation that runs through the Public Services Commission, so there's, there's CBG funds that goes directly to support nonprofit programming. I think you'll be seeing that agenda item will be back in front of council next week for your approval. There's, I think, usually that's about, I think, is it a fifteen percent set aside of the CBG funds, I'm looking at Director Doolin. So, that, that comes through our commission, the Public Services Commission every year, so those are funds that have gone to nonprofits in the past. And sometimes we do do pass-through allocations to nonprofits for specific needs, whether that be housing, such as funds that have gone to Phoenix Development Services recently, or other housing development agencies for affordable housing reasons. So, it's, the, the nexus, I think, the connection would be the, the fact that those mental health services are needed in our community, and, and I think that that's the rationale behind it. That's the only, the thing that I would look at there with that, so...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager, and that is, we know that we are, the, the bell is sounded as far as mental health in our, in our society, especially amongst our young people as well, too. We know with the closing of Zeller several years ago, and, and we see evidence of it, we really do, and so, although I understand the hesitancy of, of making that donation, and I definitely respect the, the comments that Councilmember Seer shared, and I'll be bringing this topic actually to my morning coffee this Thursday to hear what my constituents feel about this, but I think this is something that we definitely need to have an open mind about, because the sense of urgency is here. the sense of urgency is here, and Unity Point Health has made a big investment in our community. They're one of our biggest employers, and I think that I would rather, and all due respect to Councilman Velpula's point, but I would rather tell them that we're not gonna make the investment than to sit back and then hop on the gravy train later when it looks like the facility's built, and now we want to say, hey, we want to make a donation. I would rather just set the expectation like, you know, at this time, we just don't want to create that precedence, and so we're not gonna support versus sitting back and wait. You know, that's personally how I feel, but I definitely look forward to getting some feedback Thursday, but I definitely think we should consider to keep an open mind for this. No point intended to the Young Minds Project, but I think we definitely need to be open. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I definitely can say I'm not prepared to make a definitive decision on how I feel about this one tonight. I've got more questions to ask, especially after listening to the conversation here. Some more things have really come to mind to think about, but one thing that I don't know if it has been said in other discussions, but has the county been asked to put money into this, and where are they at with it?
Well, I think it was mentioned that the county took a considerable reduction in the sale price of the property when Headington Oaks was sold from the county to Unity Place. I think it was at a pretty sizable discount.
Because the one thing that I'm kind of hung up on and really not sure, what's got me unsure where I want to be with this is I know it's a community benefit, but it's also a facility that's not in the city of Peoria, so I have some concern with that precedence as well in giving money to something that's outside of our city limit boundaries, and that's something I really need to think about. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just want to kind of echo some of the sentiment shared by my colleague, Alan, and I can remember, well, prior and after Zeller Zone Center closed, going to the state legislature, a couple administrations, when they were cutting money, social services was always, it was always done at the expense of social service agencies and programs around the state, so that left a tremendous void in our community, not just here in Peoria, but throughout the state, and we have not recovered from that. And as I drive around and see tents popping up still over right by our interstate here, I'm constantly reminded of the need to somehow begin to address this problem. We've got folks all over, not just in Peoria, but all over, suffering from mental health issues, and so we've been considerate of OSF in the past, and I think if we want to be able to continue to support the efforts of the healthcare programs here, we could at least have an open mind, because this problem isn't going away, it seems to be getting worse. So I would just beg that we would be open and considerate, because if you drive around, we've got homeless people all over our community, so we've got to, at some point, begin to address the problem so that we can provide facilities and services. Thank you.
Welcome. I'm not thinking of this as much of a donation, per se, as an investment. And I know the facility is located in West Peoria, not in the city of Peoria, but I think that we do have to also think more regionally in terms of the services to the citizens of Peoria, that they're not, we're not just served entirely by those entities that are located, you know, within our borders. But I see it as an investment, as a stakeholder stepping up, like we did with Housing for the Homeless, like we did with Infrastructure for OSF, like we did with the Health Equity Initiative in partnership with the county. But there's definitely a strong need, and I'm not hung up over a million dollars either, because I don't think it has to be a million dollars. I think that it can be less than a million dollars. But I would like to see the city kind of give its fair share to a project that's going to help to serve the mental health needs of our community. Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I noted last week, I mean, I think everyone around the horseshoe agrees, this is very much needed, and it'll be a very important program. I do have some concerns. I'm not thrilled about any of the three options. You know, I know we have a healthy budget, much healthier than we've had in years past, but a million dollars in one year is a lot of money, and I'm not confident in our projections. I know that they're conservative, but we're facing increasing inflation, it continues to rise, supply shortages continue, our costs continue to rise. I'm not confident that we're gonna have this surplus, or, you know, the general fund is gonna be the way that we think it's gonna be with your option one. I'd be more apt to support a proposal that spread out our donation over three or four years. I did ask Dr. Nepp that when he gave his presentation, and he said that would have just as much of an impact on the program. He also stated, you know, that their current goal for the stage of their capital campaign is, he said, 12.5 to 15 million dollars, and they've already have a commitment, they've already raised 10 million. So, you know, I think we still could be helpful and show our commitment and our support, but do it over a more extended period of time. So that's at least where I am right now. I would prefer to do it that way. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Grayup?
Well, I think one thing should be clear as we look at our reports each day, each week. We have a lot of adolescents in our community who are seriously out of control and committing heinous, horrific crimes, to the point where some of them have been, if it continues, will be tried as adults to adjudicate one capital crime. Imperial County right now costs about 1.5 million. And, you know, it's one thing to see what's happening with some of our adults, another thing, it's very disheartening to see so many of our kids behaving in such unhinged ways like I've never seen before. So I just throw that out on the table as we considered the request. We've needed this for a long time, as I said before, and it is a huge need. West Peoria, Peoria doesn't matter. I mean, if it's a law enforcement issue, then it's a law enforcement issue. Speeding car doesn't know West Peoria from Peoria or Bartonville or wherever, and if there are kids, there are kids. And we are that big city between Chicago and St. Louis, with many of the same big city problems. And we're coming out of a pandemic. I think that's contributed to some of the enhanced acting out that we're seeing. I would certainly want to know from Mr. Nepp in more detail, and that wasn't the purpose when he was here last time, how they could connect with our schools for potential referrals if they envision doing anything in some of our schools, things of that sort. But just some thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just a clarification. I'm not against the initiative, and as you rightly worded, I'm not, you know, hung on that million-dollar thing. And I also agree to the fact that this initiative should be supported by the city, but the only catch here is that the million dollar is something that my brain is not accepting. Thank you.
I understand.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I often think that priorities are set by the dollars that we invest into them, and hearing the comments tonight, I couldn't agree with more that I hear on the horseshoe, I think in conjunction with everything that was said. One thing, we don't have a, we don't have boundaries that isolate us from our larger community, and we don't have something that's in competition with this new facility that is actually going to be providing service, not only to the outside area, but also within Peoria, to our residents. And while I know that the question about, does this then lead to other asks from other organizations, I think this one is fundamentally different than most requests we get, because this is not only helping our future generation at a time that is critical for them, but providing those services locally, as opposed to, as we heard the other night, where they don't exist here in the area to the capacity that we need. But it also helps those families, because a struggle with mental illness is not just a struggle of one. It is a struggle that family and friends, colleagues, everybody takes on together, teachers, and so there is a larger picture here. What I also heard, and I think Councilwoman Jensen had some very good comments on, maybe looking at the funding of this slightly different, too. And the ask for a million dollars is a number, and I think that we can talk about what the ask could be or should be, but I only heard three options, and all of them were an either-or sort of situation. And I would request that maybe the city manager go back and take a look at trimming with a scissors rather than a hatchet, and see if we can pull in a couple of projects just a little lighter, just slightly lighter. And if we would also maybe look at a multi-year gift versus a single-year gift, could we find our way towards an investment in our kids that this could be a part of? And I think, so there could be a fourth or possibly a fifth option that could come back to us on how this could be funded, so that we're not saying it's this or this, but that we can do multiple projects as a city. This is something that is direly needed in our community, and I don't know where I'll be when we end up on this, but I'd just like to see additional options brought to us on the possibility of how we could fund this important initiative. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you're very welcome. So, Manager, I'm hearing more options, perhaps over multiple years, or two to three years, perhaps not at that level, maybe a little lighter?
We'll put a couple of other options together for council to consider.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd just like to say I think this has been one of the best discussions we've had around this horseshoe. This is difficult, but, you know, the points made, I think, are excellent. I really agree with almost everyone, which means I, but that doesn't mean I disagree with everyone else, you know? The thing that I'm very much in favor of is a return to residential treatment of people with mental health problems. We got away from that quite a long time ago, and because we could take care of all these things with medicine and pills and whatnot, and of course, it hasn't worked, and we not only have this facility in the planning for young people, but also an adult facility out of 91 with OSF. I just think these are very, very good moves that will truly serve this part of our population that needs this kind of help. And so I'm proud of us, and I think however we decide to go will be very beneficial for our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Manager, ready to move to the next one?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The third report back was the Site Selector Report back in your packet. Question three is really an email from Chris Setti that outlined and summarized the Site Selector visit. Councilman Velpula had asked that we present this to you. There is, in the packet, there is also the notes from the Site Selector Group that came to Peoria. I think it's key to point out that their probably number-one issue that they said that we needed to focus on is really focusing on making downtown vibrant, being the centerpiece of the city, and looking at ways that we can do that to make Peoria more attractive, competitive, and that's something that they felt that we needed to really focus on. So we're happy to answer any questions. I know that Councilman Velpula and I had a chance to meet with Assistant City Manager Richardson and Mr. Setti to talk about some different strategies, and I think he may want to talk about those a little bit as well.
Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the Site Selector Report gives us a clear-cut picture of how the city is seen from an outsider's perspective. It's no secret that since I come from a medical background and a healthcare background, this particular topic has a special meaning to me. So, you know, being from the biotech or the life census sector, I believe that growing medical or healthcare industries can benefit from the existing healthcare systems, that could be the biotech startups or bio-pharma startups, because one of the suggestions the Site Selectors made were to start from validating the therapeutics. That means they wanted to really see if we can invest in a startup that could really grow the company in that direction. You know, the steps that we, probably I would say, the steps that we take now, it not only applies for biotech sector, but also for any incoming new industry that wanted to raise and expand in Peoria. And, you know, thank you, City Manager Patrick and Kimberly, I think Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson. We had a first round of discussion about these points and how we could, you know, express, how we could actually, you know, understand and digest the hard facts that are presented with regards to the biotech sector or with regards to having Peoria as the next biotech hub. That's the purpose of discussion. And one thing that was apparent was we need to be very innovative, because when you look at the minutes, so this sector has been sought by several mid-to-high, you know, populated cities. It's not, we are not, we are the first one to venture into the space. But for us to capture the market, we have an active catalyst, that is the healthcare. The healthcare could be OSF Healthcare, or it could be College of Medicine. They have a lot of list of, I would say, life census division, which the startups could benefit from. So one solution that, you know, it seemed that to benefit us maybe is to think out of the box where, I mean, this is just a ballpark number, we can debate on this as we go, but the idea is, let's say, we come up with a proposal to have like a bucket for 200,000, where we can actually split that 200 into four, or 450,000 startups or 200,000 startups, and this should not, this need not to be allocated only for biotech, but it could be even for retail as well as biotech. But then, the criteria that we thought would be, let's say, a startup company comes to Peoria and say, with the intent that we are gonna give them some startup fund from the city, or whichever mechanism that we decide, we don't want to give it to a startup company, meaning they just started the company, they came to Peoria, wanted to take the advantage. See, one of the criteria that, you know, we thought was- See, one of the criteria that, you know, we thought was to have a matching fund to, I mean, if a startup company is coming and they apply, if our grant mechanism is 50 grand, maybe the company should be able to show the matching dollars, that's the first thing. And to address their comments, that we have to revitalize downtown. So we thought that the company that would be funded by the city should be, or could be, in the downtown area. And third one is to open the opportunities to create local talent, or hire local talent. In return, maybe, you know, Manager could speak more about that, but that is more about tax incentives that could be given for a startup company. So by doing this, my, the goal could be, you know, if we are asking matching dollars, that means we'll say, the players will be serious. It's not like a startup company, and then if you are actually trying to get companies housed in downtown, that means it may help in revitalization, bring new talent, new blood, new kind of generation to the Peoria. And third, we have, the advantage could be, you know, strengthening our regional workforce by letting them work in a biotech sector, which is very new to the city. So I think, you know, I believe that this initiative would be helpful for us to brand and rebrand the city of innovation. We went, I went back and looked at this initiative, there's only one city that has been done till date, one city that took that route, that is Oklahoma City. And then I think it is a great opportunity for us to think in that direction. It may take its course now, or it may not, but if we wanted to take things seriously, we wanted to open really, we wanted to really bring more talent. I mean, healthcare could be one vehicle. I'm not saying it is the vehicle, but I would say it is one vehicle where we could bring more talent into the city. And finally, I would like to thank Chris Setti and Lenora and her team to educate us on that. And I would really love to see what the council thinks on this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your insight, Councilmember Velpula. And, you know, they talk about Peoria having a brand, a recognized brand, but their impression was that it was fading. But their impression was that Peoria could potentially become a hub for biotech or biom manufacturing. And, you know, especially in the life sciences, we have great medical facilities and suppliers, and great potential for more biotech and biom manufacturing. I'd like to just briefly, and it's mainly for the people that are listening to the discussion, I want to just very quickly read those recommendations that came, there are eight, that came from the Site Selector Group. First recommendation is that we should leverage what we already have. There are elements of the life sciences industry in the region, but they're not yet knitted together, they indicate. Second, they recommend that we conduct a workforce survey to show area skill sets transferable to biom manufacturing. Third, we seek opportunities for donated equipment to help launch training programs at Illinois Central College. Fourth, that we grow our own first, as Councilman Velpula indicated, that it's the best attraction tool. Five, position Peoria as a destination for life sciences. However, the narrative must be nuanced to write segments of biom manufacturing, or perhaps other life sciences segments. Validate therapeutics. Don't reinvent the wheel. Made me think of your comments earlier, Councilmember Jensen. Look at some peer communities and be realistic. And last, engage an urban design team to develop a long-term downtown development strategy that integrates with the local and regional economic development strategies. Unless more residential development takes place in downtown, and it becomes a destination for younger homeowners, it would be challenging to build a memorable place that attracts talent. So it's good to have sometimes that outside view, even if it confirms what we already know. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate Councilman Velpula's insight on this, and I think Peoria has the ability, and is demonstrated in our history, that we can rebrand ourselves. We were the whiskey capital of the world, then we became the destination where penicillin was manufactured here in Peoria, to the earth-moving manufacturer of the world as well, too, in Caterpillar. And now we have a thriving healthcare system. And so I'm glad that we got this feedback. I consider this constructive feedback, because not only will this help us set up for potential this industry, but also other industries, because we know that our downtown and our riverfront is one of our greatest assets. I think everyone around this horseshoe understands how important it is that in order for us to be eligible for future industries, and to continue this path of growth, that we have to invest in our downtown. So I'm glad that we have some tangible feedback that we can work on. We can figure out how we can get other partners to get involved, so that way it could be a cohesive strategy moving forward, so that way we can be ready for the next big thing. Because I believe in the mantra of staying ready so we don't have to get ready. Thank you.
Okay. Manager, you want to take us to item number four?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to turn to Director Powers for items four, five, and six, and I'm going to let him walk through all three of those items that we have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager? Fulton Plaza, if I may, I just want to provide some background, but then the three points of what we're going to do are easy. You will also note in the CIP, there's a sheet for Fulton Plaza for conversion back to a roadway, at a cost of $2.2 million. I will tell you from recent walks on Fulton Plaza, it contains utilities, vaults, a former fountain, where the bust of George Washington was again, which is not so much an obstruction, but what is buried, hence the cost. I also want to put in a shameless plug for an idea I had to bring here, which is a thing called a volnerf, which is a European road calming, basically making a road a park. They say if you turn onto one, and even if you're impaired, you feel like you don't belong there, which is exactly what you look for when you're looking for a traffic cop. So all of those iterations have come about, and when you look at the capital sheet, you note it's funded in the future, meaning it's not funded. Then let's bring COVID into this equation, as to we were reducing spending, trying to keep spending down, hence Fulton Plaza is in the condition, isn't it? That's, quite frankly, it's deferred. And we were going to get money, we weren't going to get money. We were going to pull the capital project forward, we didn't. And we didn't want to pour operational dollars into it if we were going to use it for the capital side. So all of that being said is why it is where it is. Not an excuse, it just is what it is, I'm just stating the facts. That being said, leads us to the point of what we will be doing until we get to future. Our plan is to, there's currently a vault there that we're, frankly, again, there are some vaults, it's just been there so long that we don't know the owner of. And we're trying to ascertain that, but until then, we are going to replace the vault lid, because there are active utilities in the vault. That'll be the first act that we'll take. We'll also go through and do some leveling on the pavement. We'll also go in and deal with the vegetation management issues in the spring around the trees that are currently planted there. And then we are also going to take some of the green space and have a landscape architect actually design some floral arrangements, if you will, at just landscaping, that we will add to our citywide vegetation management contract next year. So that's the plan going forward, I also, but again, I just would have been remiss had I not mentioned, again, there is a capital sheet for it to be converted, that makes it integral to the one-way, two-way conversion for Southwest Adams, Southwest Jefferson, which will involve street, again, signaling, a lot of those things that just frankly are cost prohibitive at this moment. But it is a planned conversion. So we want to be sensitive to the money we spend there, we don't want to make major investments, but point well taken, Counselor, it's there now, and we need to take care of it, and that is our plan going forward. So, and I'm actually addressing Councilman Rickenback, I'm sorry, this was your report back, sir. So if there are no further questions, that's it on that report back.
Councilmember Rickenback, you okay with that, or you have additional?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is perhaps one of the things referenced in that previous report back, talking about the donut hole, the hole in the donut here, that we talk about a vibrant downtown. And again, for those of us that work here, this is really good news, Director, thank you for that. And I just think it's kind of ironic, though, that those are the kind of things that I think we expect to be occurring on a regular basis. I mean, the maintenance of the surface treatments, you know, those, the broken vault, the one that has the horses on it, I mean, if we could, if that's going to be there for the foreseeable future, let's at least make it so that it looks presentable, because that's the front door for a lot of folks walking from the Civic Center down to the Riverfront Museum. And, you know, that's not necessarily the impression we want to give. A follow-up question, though, does our agreement, redevelopment agreement with OSF have any restrictions on Fulton Street between Adams Street and Washington? Is there any? As we talk about this section, I would like to think that we would want to make it consistent for that two blocks. So is there anything that precludes us from any action on that block?
None, I'm sorry. None other than we would accommodate where the current parking garage is now, and how we would signalize the intersections. But that's just to the point of how we would design the street in regard to those proximities. There's nothing restricting the use, other than I found out we can't build a volnerf, which I would, we can't do that. But beyond that, it just has to be from a point of what the state has required, it has to be a straight street, and we will signalize it accordingly based on the new amenities on either side.
Nothing in the OSF redevelopment agreement that would prohibit us from making any changes on that section from Adams to Washington.
And if I may continue, Mayor, would this be something, you know, we've all seen various proposals for Fulton Street come up through the years, and hence our apprehension to spend too much money on it. Is this something the Downtown Advisory Commission, or the DDC, who would be the one that would actually, who would be the appropriate entity to take this bull by the horns, if you will?
That would be your Public Works Department.
I think I have your number. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I believe I noted the CIP sheet. $2.2 million, Counselor, that's the bull. Correct.
You can proceed to number five, please.
Madam Mayor, and I'm frankly to a point of procedure, since this came from the Traffic Commission as a resolution, not only is it a report back, it is a resolution from the Traffic Commission to the council with official recommendation. So I presume this would be read to the record as a resolution.
At a later date.
Okay, thank you.
This is just the report back, right?
Yeah, that's why, because the way I was reading, I was like...
This is just the report back.
Thank you. I just was, I was going to make sure I read this correctly. So the Traffic Commission did meet on the 18th of October, and came out with four specific recommendations for the council and staff. Three of them in the area of complete streets, which, again, I'll allow you to read, basically asking us to increase our focus around facilities that are pedestrian, bicycle, trail-friendly. If you read it and read into the intent, it is quite frankly to, you get into the point of, and I'll actually come into some of this when we look at some of the things like we've done on Forest Hill, for instance, where you see bike paths that were installed, but the only barrier between the bicyclist and a vehicle is paint. So when you're retrofitting any city, and you're road dieting, or you're doing the things that we are attempting to do in Peoria, as you go forward into the future, when you're not built out, it's easier to design them into a project. But as you go back and you attempt to retrofit some of these things, the cost comes when you have to build actual barriers between pedestrians and vehicles, or vehicles and bicycles. Because paint, if you've been there, often people will think it's a right turn, and it's a bicycle. And Peoria is not alone in this. This is any city that has ever retrofitted, or went into an area where they are road dieting or trying to shrink pavement into alternative uses. Therein lies the challenge. And I believe that was the commission's intent, was to simply say they would like to see an increased focus on funding into creating actual facilities that are focused around a complete street philosophy, as we retrofit and as we move forward. So that would be the first three points, in my opinion. The fourth point is simply to recommend increased spending all around in a point of safety, as we consider all transportation facilities across all modes, pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular. And that is basically a summation of the report from the commission.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, a few questions. I mean, one of their recommendations is to prioritize funding for accomplishing the bicycle accommodations in the Peoria Complete Streets project, and follow the Peoria Bicycle Master Plan. So how much of that is included in our CIPs and in this budget? We're increasing and continuing to add bike routes, as well as more pedestrian safe walkways, and, you know, and number four is to increase funding for roadways, bike paths, and sidewalks, which I keep bringing up sidewalks in other parts of the older city, not just the 61605 that we've, we're focusing on. I'd like to see that in some more projects for more sidewalk improvement in the other older neighborhoods in the city. And it's pretty consistent with what the Transportation Committee has recommended. I know, you can't move the podium, so...
I was just making sure you were through, Counselor. Yes, our projects, as they have scope, if you will, and they're usually around reconstruction, which is what I was kind of alluding to earlier, retrofit versus new. As we do reconstruction, complete street concepts are taken fully into consideration for sidewalk, trail, bicycle path, and those things, because you're at a point where you're constructing something and you can easily do it. So, yes, going forward, those things happen in design. As we retrofit, though, I would say, no. We are, again, at a paint level, not barrier level. We are, again, as we road diet and we look at various areas and how they're designed, they aren't fully designed in a complete street concept, but they aren't, and I would say they also are not funded to a point to where we are redesigning them, unless they come up for a full reconstruction.
Well, yeah, my understanding, when we adopted the Complete Streets program, which was several years ago, was any new infrastructure program was going to include the bike paths and all the more walkable features.
Where applicable. It's not going to be everywhere. It's not going to be everywhere, but it is where applicable, and where we have funding. I mean, the big challenge we have with all of this is that dreaded F-word, funding. It's being able to afford all of the demands that we have across the entire city to manage the infrastructure budgets that we have. So, you know, where we're doing it, for example, MacArthur Highway. MacArthur Highway, we put in parking on-street and a bike lane, a two-lane bike lane, protected by that parking lane, just with paint. That was done. Where now, we've got $7 million of grant funds that we can start to scope a project to do something differently on MacArthur, because we've got some state funds in this budget that are going to go towards us really looking at doing something different on that stretch of road. That's one way that we're able to do that. That goes back to what Director Powers was just saying about design. We'll build those kind of accommodations into that new design where we can. Other areas where we've done that, we've looked at Western, Glen Avenue is going to have some elements of that, they're going to be built into it. Northmore had it when we built it into Northmore. It's just going to be where we have those major road reconstructions, we're going to have to look at, do we have the funds available to do all of that?
And then my other question about, we're continuing to add bike paths? And then my other question about, we're continuing to add bike paths to connect?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, we are, Counselor, and I, I know you can hear me, it's just I'm not.
Yeah, no, that's good.
I wanted to make sure that you were aware I was answering your question. Yes, we are increasing that focus.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's important that we, we fund things inconsistent with what the Transportation Committee is recommending, and I just want to make sure that we continue to increase funding for those things and that we prioritize them. And I still would like a, a proposal on sidewalks in the older neighborhoods besides 61605, and I don't think that was included in the report backs.
Well, I, I think that, that just by need, and, and where we have our need alone, if there's, if we're successful in receiving the $2 million earmark for funds in 61605, the $1.6 million of sidewalk funding that will be spent in 2023 will be in districts one, two, and three predominantly, because that's where most of our need for sidewalk replacement work is going to be. I don't know if Public Works has scoped that out, we can put together a report back of, of where those, those projects will be in terms of sidewalks based upon the need that we have, but, but I think that's, assuming that we're going to get the, the earmark, and, and our fingers are crossed that we will, that opens up that door for those to be done where we have our needs for sidewalk replacement work. It's not going to be everywhere, I mean, we have, Councilman Seer raised some, some sidewalk issues that we had to deal with this past year, um, that we want to try and work on in the fifth district, but for the most part, the lion's share of that work will be in the older neighborhoods.
So you'll provide a report back with the?
We can.
For the next meeting?
Where, where some of those locations would be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Director. I think you get one more item.
Busy. Item was just simply an oversight, and I actually mentioned it because I had it in front of me, and you should have in your packet now, the CIP sheet for Kickapoo Terrace that shows the funding source, the actual project detail, and what it would entail. That's really it, is just adding the sheet to the CIP.
Okay. You have any questions there, Councilwoman Jackson?
Madam Mayor, no, I did get an opportunity to look at it, and it pretty much coincides with what we had talked about, so it looks good. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Manager, Directors, uh, for the feedback and report backs. Anything else?
If I could, I, you know, a couple of things that we'd like to, to do, I think that, that, you know, clearly hearing the direction tonight from Council on Unity Place, we can come back with a, a number of different options in the form of budget motions. We can put the parking study together as a, as a motion for next week to come forward. We can also come forward with the Kickapoo Terrace project as a, as a budget motion. In looking at the capital budget as we prepared it, there's three more cleanup items we would like to ask Council to consider. The first kind of ties in with a, a press conference we had today, and that was the Rock Island Greenway, and, um, we had applied for a state grant that's in the budget for the Rock Island Greenway for, that we would receive in 2024. And the state wants us to work to connect the Rock Island Greenway running down Abington, and they want us to do that work. It's going to necessitate that we actually turn down the grant and then apply for it again at, in a following year, another ITEP grant. They said we can apply for up to $3 million for that grant, but they want us to push that out. So we've got some, some changes to that, that, that actually ties in, that's, you know, as we talk about complete streets, trails are an important part of that, and, and tying that in. They're very confident, we're working with them, uh, to try and coordinate this effort, but they've asked that we would just reapply in the upcoming year for this. They want us to continue to do the design work on the project, so we'd like to bring that cleanup item forward.
Okay, so how would that come as a, we would work that amount that we're applying for into the budget?
It, it's kind of, it, yes, what it, what it means is that instead of having money in 2024 for this project, we would move it out to 2025, and then we would lower the amounts that we would spend in 2024. So we'll have a, a, a proposed motion for you next week on that item. Second is, um, we had proposed a new curb and gutter program, uh, in the Stormwater Utility Fund. The funding in the capital budget only came for 2023, we'd like to extend that out through 2027, it's just simply amending that budget that includes that in the capital budget for those four additional years. And then the third item is, as we've been working on streetlights, and tomorrow we have, um, a, a press conference about, uh, being the recipient of a $2.5 million grant for street lighting i- in the city, um, we'd like to actually clean up some of the accounting of that in the capital budget. It actually is, would, would be a, a reduction of about $90,000 in the, the current year, but overall, because we're receiving those grant funds, uh, it's less money that coming out of our local motor fuel tax funds. So those would be the, the, the six total budget motions that we have, unless there are other motions that Council wants us to bring forward, um, and we'll be prepared to, happy to prepare those and have those ready for you for next week.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, first, just a, one question, and I gotta, a couple of report back, please. Question, how's our relationship with Ameren? And when you were talking about streetlight tomorrow, were you talking about traffic light? What can, explain to us, I guess, what we're talking about, and how's our relationship with Ameren, please?
So, so our streetlights that we're talking about, streetlight funding, would be where, where we actually have the lights that illuminate the street, not talking about the traffic signals, uh, is what we're talking about. In, in many parts of, of, of the older part of the city, um, we have, um, we have wooden utility poles where we have streetlights on those utility poles. We ask Ameren to put those lights up, they'll put them up for us, and then we pay the burn rate for the, the electricity usage of those poles. And so in many parts of the city, that's what we utilize, and, um, we've had a pretty good relationship with Ameren overall. I think that, that, you know, some, some of the areas, I think we'd like to move a little faster, uh, particularly in the first district, uh, that we'd like to see some, some areas, uh, where, where we would hope that Ameren would be able to speed up the, the installation, particularly in some of our alleys for some lighting that we'd like to see there.
Thank you very much. Uh, I got a couple, uh, requests for report backs. I had, uh, great conversation with Director Craddy about this, and, and we had, he gave me some reports already, and I'd like to make it official. My, I'd like to make my, my request, my request official for all my colleagues to report backs. Number one, in our CIP plan, um, our summary, I'd like to ask for a summary by council district and by all, which means there's, there'd be six different, I mean, I know you understand that, all, where the money is, is from the CIP plan is spent on all the district, and then after that, District one, two, three, four, and five. And that's my first request, is to make it official. And thank you for all the work you've done on that already, Mr. Craddy. The second request is, I want to challenge a manager and Mr. Craddy on our garbage plan. We have a 10-year plan to repay that account right now. I want to challenge you guys to come up with a plan that we would repay that account the next five years. And I know it's possible, just one idea, you know, from my conversation, is example, we have a cost of sweeping the streets, right, that in my opinion, and I think would be everybody's opinion, it's very important to sweep, to sweep the streets so we can keep our sewers, uh, clean. Uh, I know there's tremendous amount of costs in that, no, of that, uh, task in the garbage plan, just by eliminating that, and I know we can change our plan from a 10-year plan to a five-year plan. So I just want to challenge Mr., Mr., uh, Manager and Mr. Craddy. I know it's possible, but I, I want to task you guys to come back, uh, with a five-year plan to get that account in great shape. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oftentimes, uh, Councilman Grab has, uh, complained about, uh, street lighting and our responsibility and Ameren's responsibility. Councilman Seer just brought it up again. I, I, for one, I'm quite unclear as to where our responsibility ends or, and Ameren's begins or vice versa. And I wonder if we could have a report back on that, uh, ju- just to make, just to make it clear whose responsibility it is and where we are on those responsibilities. Are we up to date with them? Are we behind on them, et cetera?
We'd be happy to provide you with a report back.
I, I'm sure you would, Mr. Manager. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, Mayor, that's it.
Okay, great discussion, everyone, thank you. Adam Clark?
We are at Citizens Opportunity to Address the City Council.
I have one card, intent to comment from, uh, Ms. Mary Clark.
Hi, I'm Mary Clark, I live at 2307 North Prospect Road in Peoria. Um, a lot of us are my friends, have been concerned about the storm sewer, and it keeps, the price keeps going up and up. And I'm retired and have been for tw- 12 years, and so this price is getting pretty steep. Well, first, it was like $23, and didn't think it was that bad at first, but then I also didn't realize that it wasn't just once a year, it's coming more often, so every three months, I think it is. So I was talking to our manager, and, um, he was saying something about that it could possibly, we'd get a relief for it for a year. But I'm wondering why, how that got started anyhow, I know it was before your time, um, Mayor Ali. How did we get strapped with this? And it's not in the taxes, but it's an extra fee on us, and then for it to keep going up. And we would just like it, you know, to go away, actually. We know we need the storm sewer stuff taken care of, but I understand that this is something that was, uh, proposed by the federal government several, couple of decades ago, probably at least, and, um, now I'm getting saddled with it, or we all are, and we don't, you know, shouldn't, should be something else done here, this just doesn't seem right. And, um, and while you were talking about the parking, the back-end parking on the, just one block on, um, Monroe out there just disrupts the traffic terrible. I never understood any of that, never, that just doesn't make sense for one block. And most of the time, when I come, like, coming down here tonight, the, there was a car that knew that that street was parking there, um, where you back in, and didn't care, just blew right on down through there. So there's a lot of that that goes on. So that's about all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, would you mind touching base with Ms. Clark?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input. Madam Clark?
I do not believe we have an executive session, so we are at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Kelly? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service. Yeah.